I'm Julie Rose, and this is Top of Mind. I have been a radio journalist for two decades. But a few years ago, I found myself avoiding the news for long stretches because of how depressing and divisive it all seems. I still wanted to be informed and engaged on important issues, though, and I figured I couldn't be alone in that. So we created this podcast. Each week, we tackle one tough topic in a way that will challenge you, help you feel more empathy, and empower you to become a better citizen, a kinder neighbor, and a more effective advocate. Today, school boards in trouble.
I actually remember very well, it was July of 2020. Our schools in San Francisco were closed, of course, because it was the summer, but also because of the pandemic, as they were across the country.
This is Meredith Dodson.
My kids are just about six and seven and a half.
Back in 2020, her oldest was about to start San Francisco's public pre-K program. So Dodson joined a bunch of parents' forums on Facebook, and they were buzzing with hope the school board would reopen schools in the fall.
The science had already started to become clear that our schools could reopen following certain public health guidelines with the six feet of separation and things like that. But what I noticed was there were actually a couple of school board members going into these forums, one in particular who was going in and vilifying parents publicly in these parent forums for even talking about going back to school because it was unsafe. And that was pretty shocking.
Now, before her kids were old enough for school, Dodson says the local school board hadn't really been on her radar, but she'd always assumed they'd be eager to hear what parents had to say.
These are city officials. They're elected by us, parents, voters, and then here they are vilifying their constituents and outright rejecting perspectives from parents. I just started to learn how deeply politicized our school board in San Francisco was.
90% of America's kids go to public schools, and we spend a huge portion of our tax dollars trying to make sure they get a high-quality education. While state and federal regulations have a say in what happens in schools, critical decisions about educating nearly 50 million public school kids in America are left to local school boards: funding, facilities, busing, discipline policies, how teachers are placed in the district, and which curricula they use. All of it is overseen by some 15,000 school boards chosen all across the country, usually through local elections that generally require no education expertise or even that a candidate's kids attend public schools. Well, this season, Top of Mind is assessing assumptions. We are committed to democracy in this country and generally assume that electing people to make important decisions is best. How well is that working for us when it comes to education? Is the fact that we rely on elected school boards tied in any clear way to the struggling status of students in the United States? Meredith Dodson was not the only American parent prompted by the pandemic to start paying closer attention to her local school board. The heightened scrutiny collided with polarized politics into an explosion of anger and protest all across the country. What happened in San Francisco was notable primarily because California law allows voters to recall elected officials, although recall campaigns rarely work.
But in the end, it was successful, and three of the school board members were recalled.
Ousting school board members had not been Meredith Dodson's initial instinct. Yeah, it bothered her that board members were bad-mouthing parents, but she thought it was possible that they were right about not opening schools yet.
These school board members were saying families don't want to go back. They're scared, particularly Black and Latino families, many of whom were hit by COVID harder, were more exposed in the beginning. And so, you know, I went to this place of listening, well, let's connect with families and hear where they're at and what they need to support their kids in their learning.
That was the beginning of the San Francisco Parent Coalition.
We would meet over Zoom and brainstorm solutions. We had some parent leaders from the Latino community who were working very closely with us, and they took some clipboards down to the community in San Francisco, where we have a high percentage of Latino families, and got 80 signatures within one or two days that we brought to the school board, all of Latino families saying, please reopen our schools. We need to get our kids back into in-person learning. They're not doing OK at home. Please listen to us and stop saying that we don't want to go back to school because we do. And it was disappointing. They pretty much just ignored us, ignored these moms, and some really ugly stuff that these school board members were saying publicly about the families who were speaking up and begging for the school board to listen to them. The two big things that were happening during that school year, and they were avoiding the reopening conversation, they were focused on renaming 44 of our schools. We have something like 130 schools across the district here, and they decided to rename 44 of them if there was any kind of racist or offensive background to the name of the school.
And why was it troubling, too, that they were focusing on that?
Because, you know, while we're in this crisis of kids unable to access their learning, unable to access their education, rather than focus on what we could do to either get these kids back in person or to support them better during this time, we were renaming the schools. So it didn't seem to be, you know, it was just maybe not the right time for it. It took me a little bit longer to understand what's behind all of this, but I just started to notice the groups and leaders who were speaking up and fueling this message that we couldn't reopen our schools and that it wasn't safe. And they weren't, most of them weren't, parent groups.
Like what? Like who, I mean, what kind of interest group would care if it wasn't a parent group?
There are citizens groups, there's political groups that have endorsement potential, right? They make endorsements at school board races. And so when you look at San Francisco, a large percentage of our city council members are, they start out as school board members. And so I think in terms of how politicized we were realizing the school board was, you know, they were using this platform that they had, not necessarily for the best interest of kids, but for the soundbites that would help them move on to higher office. And this is, you know, part of what we get with having citywide elections for our school board.
Only a fraction of voters in San Francisco actually have school-aged children, and an unusually high percentage of those families send their kids to private school.
So school board members in San Francisco are not elected by public school families. That's what we finally started to realize in terms of why is this school board being so nasty to public school parents? Because they don't care about public school parents, or they didn't.
Once the recall campaign got underway in early 2021, the school board tabled the renaming plans and committed to reopening schools, which they did later that fall. But it was too late, says Dodson. The recall had already taken root.
There was a ground swell of parent energy by that point, and it was all over the media. Every day, there were multiple articles about kids out of their classrooms. We'd had press conferences at that point with our mayor, with city council members, with the head of UCSF, our main hospital here, saying, please, like, there's a mental health emergency. So whereas normally, public education is just not top of mind for San Francisco residents on average, at this point, it was such a crisis, and San Francisco could not ignore it.
If such a huge percentage of San Francisco parents send their kids to private school, higher than most other cities in California and many cities around the country, why continue to fight this school board instead of sending your kids to private school?
Well, my family, you know, we, my husband and I both grew up through public school. My mom was a public school teacher. We're just like super public education advocates. Despite how frustrating a politicized public school environment is, at the level of the child, you know, the inside the classroom, like, my kids are thriving. We love our school. We love our teachers. We couldn't be happier with our personal experience. And then my professional and advocacy experience is another story, right? It's super frustrating every day to deal with the politics of public education. But at the classroom level, we wouldn't have it any other way.
So you're satisfied with the job that the schools in San Francisco are doing, the public schools?
So in San Francisco, we are among some of the best-performing districts across the state, at least in terms of the large urban districts across the state. We are doing a great job on average. And what's really upsetting here, especially given how we're such a progressive city, is our equity gap, achievement gap, whatever you want to refer to it as, but the gap in student outcomes in math and reading and career and college readiness between our low-income children, you know, especially our low-income Black, Latino, Pacific Islander kids and their counterparts, is extremely large. It's this stubborn, persistent equity gap that we've had for I don't know how long. And unfortunately, it just grew during the pandemic.
And so is the school board sufficiently focused on that metric?
Since the recall, they have been. So they've gotten a lot more focused on student outcomes since the recall. There were three new commissioners appointed to the board, and we've had one election since then. The board underwent a whole series of trainings on effective school board governance, and it has impacted significantly how they behave as a board. The meetings are much more cordial. Parent voice is being heard, and they're talking about the things that matter, like how our kids are doing with reading outcomes, how they're doing with math outcomes, what is the disparity between different subgroups of students, and how can we address that disparity? It has gotten a lot better. Before the recall, you know, not so much.
Yeah. So what do you think is the ideal relationship between parents and a school board?
Collaboration and listening. I think parents need to understand that it's a large, diverse system, right? Different students have different needs. I think we've over 130 schools across the city, and those schools look really different. They look different in terms of the populations they serve. They look different in terms of the amount of staffing they have, the amount of community resources that they have. It's just, it's not a cookie-cutter model when you have a really large system like this. And so I think parents need to respect that and remember that it's not just about their kid and what they want for their family, but about the whole system, and that's part of, you know, public education. And I think school boards need to better listen to families and collaborate with them and hear their concerns and respect all voices, even the ones that maybe aren't 100% aligned with their perspective.
Meredith Dodson is a public school parent and executive director of the San Francisco Parent Coalition. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much, Julie.
Whether or not the school board is a common springboard to higher office in your community, it is a position people have traditionally aimed to stay in for at least a few election cycles. A nonprofit called School Board Partners surveyed board members all around the country in 2016 and found more than 70% of them plan to run for reelection. After the pandemic, the numbers had flipped.
The great resignation is coming to a school board near you, and that is both a crisis and a potential opportunity. It's an opportunity to make sure that the folks that replace them are representative and better equipped, but it's also a real wake-up call that the job is no longer sustainable.
This is Top of Mind. I'm Julie Rose. We'll be right back.
Hi, I'm Carrie Douglas. I'm the co-founder and co-CEO of School Board Partners. I am also an elected school board member here in Bend, Oregon, and a small business owner here. I'm a former teacher and the parent of two school-aged children.
My name is Ethan Ashley. I serve as a co-CEO, co-founder of School Board Partners. I also serve as an elected school board member on the Orleans Parish School Board here in New Orleans.
Ethan Ashley and Carrie Douglas founded School Board Partners in 2019 to recruit and train more diverse school boards. Both of them had been school board members for several years before the pandemic hit.
What changed during the pandemic and following the murder of George Floyd and the racial reckoning was that things became more personal, more violent, more filled with kind of a hate and vitriol for the quote "other side" that I had personally not experienced before.
There is one meeting that stands out for Carrie Douglas.
We were right in the midst of making a decision about when we were going to reopen schools, and it was also the moment when there was conversations about whether school districts were going to require vaccines for students. We never planned or had a conversation about that, but it was very much in the ether, and folks were concerned about it. And so there was a lot of energy on social media, and so many folks signing up for public comment and saying that they were going to attend, that we decided that we needed to move the meeting from our boardroom to a high school auditorium. We had hundreds of folks. You know, the difficult part was that they came really with the mindset of more of a rally with giant signs, many of which had pretty hateful things on them, and they were there to disrupt. They were there to, you know, speak out of turn and go over their time and yell and cheer and taunt and boo and really egg each other on and just create a spectacle. Rather than participating in the democratic process, which is a critical part of school board meetings and open public meeting law, the tenor really changed to where they were now, accusing us of being the devil or of being witches or Nazis, you know, things that we had just never heard before, even when folks were really frustrated with decisions that we might make.
Carrie, I'm curious if you have considered not running for reelection?
Almost every day. I already ran for reelection once, so I'm halfway through my second term and often, honestly, regret running for reelection. It's been really difficult on myself and my family, and thinking about running for reelection a third time feels really daunting. As a volunteer, you know, I was the chair of the board during the pandemic and easily worked 30 hours a week as a volunteer while also having a full-time job and being a parent.
And being called names on a regular basis.
Yes, and all of that might even be possible if there were more resources and training and support out there to help you feel like you weren't alone, like you're trying to find your way down the road without a roadmap. All of those things sort of cumulatively add up to a job that feels not only overwhelming and difficult, but if you don't feel like you're able to be effective, for me, that's sort of the icing on the cake.
My perception from the outside is that the, that intensity and that energy has continued, but now it's about books, or it's about teaching race, or it's about what gets taught regarding gender or sexuality in classrooms. Has that been your experience? And if so, why do you think that that intensity has continued even once we were past this extraordinary moment of pandemic, Ethan?
Yeah, I think the intensity has certainly continued by virtue of like, what happened? Essentially, you went from educators educating young people to families for the first time having to do so in partnership with educators in a way that I think was game-changing, life-changing. And so, you know, I think the intensity has been the added awareness of the authority of school boards on the day-to-day livelihood and outcomes for students.
You know, the increased engagement, I think, is mostly good. I mean, we at School Board Partners believe that elected school boards are an essential part of our local democracy, that parent and community voice are an essential part of how it works. And what we really focus on is, do we have leaders in those seats that are really representative of the community? Do we have a representative electorate electing those school board members? And are the school board members supported and trained to be focused on the real issues and not the quote "culture wars," which are really about adults fighting each other?
Among the most important of those real issues are the inequities that lead to persistent gaps in achievement for students of color. School boards have the power and responsibility to close those gaps because they created them in the first place, says Ethan Ashley.
Less than 70 years ago, there was segregation.
School boards across the country designed and enforced the separation of students based on race, until, in 1954, the U.S. Supreme Court outlawed school segregation in its landmark Brown versus Board of Education ruling. But, says Ashley?
After Brown v. Board, we basically had a bunch of school boards that enacted policies to continue sort of de facto segregation rather than embracing integration and racial equity. Like, for example, they really built on, on like redlined communities to create segregated school district boundaries. You know, they developed school finance systems that provided greater resources to the wealthiest and typically the whitest communities. They provided teacher contracts that sent most experienced teachers to disproportionately more wealthier and whiter schools. And, you know, I think we continue to see that students of color are disproportionately attending under-resourced schools that are more likely to be staffed by less experienced teachers, and they're provided with less access to advanced coursework and educational activities today.
Why does that continue to be the, why does that persist? And how is that tied to school board, school boards today making decisions? Or are you saying that school boards are, in many ways, sort of inadvertently perpetuating that legacy?
It's not inadvertently. They are. And so I think Carrie can speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's important to be really clear here. Like, first of all, even though school segregation is theoretically illegal, it's worse now than it ever has been, and it is school boards that make those decisions. And so many of these policies are almost the same policies that are still on the books today as coming out of Brown versus Board of Ed. So around attendance zones in particular, following Brown versus Board of Ed, school boards drew boundaries based on redlined neighborhoods and ensured that some students went to some schools and other students went to other schools. Our school districts operate almost exactly the same way 70 years later. And so it's really up to school boards to make those policy changes now that were designed back then for insidious reasons and continue to operate in the same way today. And I think it's also really important to be clear about the fact that we know how to educate kids. Good teaching and learning is not a mystery. And in fact, in my prior nonprofit, Education Cities, we published a big report where we highlighted 500 individual schools around the country where Black and Brown students outperformed their white peers even when accounting for class. So we know how to do this, and yet no school district in America has been able to do that across the system, and that is for one reason and one reason only. It is how we allocate our resources, and those decisions are all made by school boards.
If I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like a lot of school board members, particularly white folks, failed to interrogate that and recognize that the way we've always done it started with a very specific inequity in mind.
And it's because it's working for them, right? It's easy to fail to interrogate something that is working for you, which I think gets to your question around like intentional or unintentional. You know, no one wants to be thought of as being racist, but if we're unintentionally, you know, quote "unintentionally perpetuating systemic racism," first of all, it's probably from a place of privilege because we're able to be unaware and unintentional about it because it's not personally impacting us. And that when you are in a position of leadership, you are either perpetuating something or dismantling it. There's kind of nothing in between. And so that's why we really focus on the term anti-racist. And I know it's politically charged now, and people have a really difficult time with it, but it's a really easy concept to defend if you just focus on what it really means, which is, you know, to interrogate wherever there is a gap in experience or outcomes or opportunities based on demographics and to try to get to the root of it and purposefully and intentionally fix whatever policy is causing that gap.
So would you consider the shift that we've seen in the last decade, 15 years, toward open enrollment, where students don't have to go to their neighborhood school if they want to go to a different school that maybe has more resources, different racial makeup, they can choose that? And also, you know, the shift toward publicly funding charter schools? Is that an example of looking at the systemic inequities that have been baked into the way we've always done it and saying, let's do something different?
It is. I think the problem is that we would argue that many of those changes have not been done in an intentionally anti-racist way, and that all students now have access to all schools is a big step in the right direction from those neighborhood schools, you know, based on redlined attendance zones. But they're not really accessible unless we are then truly equitably funding transportation and, and the way those choices are made and how students then get to after-school care and sports and like all the implications of attending a school that's not in your neighborhood. If we don't deal with those adequately, then we're going to end up with an open enrollment system that doesn't adequately close the racial gaps and deal with segregation, which is what we see in the cities where they've been implemented. Whereas if we took an anti-racist approach first, we'd be designing open enrollment systems in a way that would even better disrupt the systemic racism.
Ethan, that's, that's actually your story of success.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt. You know, I was given a lot of opportunities because of decisions and policies that I believe our school board had made.
Ethan Ashley grew up in Compton, California.
My story is about defying the odds. I think after being born to a largely single mother, we were on government assistance growing up. I had the opportunity to attend a magnet school as opposed to my district school that was a couple of hours away from my own home.
That magnet school offered advanced classes for college credit. It was a great opportunity, but it was way too far away. Luckily, the school district provided a bus.
These policies existed and allowed me to graduate high school at 16. I had enough credits to be considered a sophomore by the time I started college, and then ultimately was 18 my senior year of college.
He graduated from Howard University, went on to get a law degree by the age of 22.
But if it wasn't for, I think, these early interventions and policies that existed that didn't exist across different districts, you know, I don't think that I'd be where I'm at today. And so we got to make sure that that exists for more students.
And so what keeps school, school boards from being more aware of this and being able to, to address these underlying issues of inequity and, and performance gaps?
Some of this comes from a lack of having the right people serving on the boards, you know, ensuring that there's folks who are representative of the challenges that we're trying to address here. And we, you know, I think we see this time and time again, you know, when we survey our folks about what they are focused in on, you know, the issues of those who are representative of the populations in which they serve differ from, from those who aren't necessarily representative of the same population.
Yeah, and we had specific questions in our survey. So one really important question was just basically, do you believe that systemic racism in education still exists? And school board members who were people of color were twice as likely to agree. White board members were half as likely to believe that it's a problem. So that's sort of the starting point. And for people of color in, in school board, you know, their top five includes issues like student achievement and outcomes with a focus on students of color and low-income students. And for white board members, that's not in their top five. So it's not just about representation for representation's sake. It's that folks bring their lived experience into the role and have different beliefs about how well the system is working, what changes need to be made, what needs to be prioritized, and they bring those mindsets and priorities into the role in really important ways.
What she's describing there is the whole point, the promise, really, of representative democracy, a government of the people, by the people, for the people, as Lincoln described in his Gettysburg Address. But if the government isn't really representative of the people it's governing, can it live up to its promise? Well, that was the disconnect that first prompted Carrie Douglas to run for school board in Bend, Oregon, as both a former teacher and a parent of kids in the public schools.
There wasn't a single person on the school board that had ever been a teacher. Only two of the seven had school-aged children. They were mostly significantly older and wealthier and whiter than our school community. They spent a lot of time talking about things like real estate and land and building and development and very little time talking about student outcomes and experiences. Teachers felt very unheard, and I wanted to help bring the conversation to focus on equity, racial equity, to focus on the needs of teachers. equity, racial equity, to focus on the needs of teachers, and try to help us talk about kids more of the time.
So you ran for school board, hoping to bring some of that perspective. But can you share something that you realized only after you got elected to the school board?
Oh, my, yes. So I often say that I thought I had a really great resume to be a school board member. Having been a former teacher, I also have an MBA and worked in finance and worked at the district level and as a nonprofit leader, and so thought I had a lot of expertise and experience to bring to the role and was really humbled to sit on that dais and realize that I was really ill-equipped. I had never written policy. I had no experience being a politician or politicking, you know, counting votes and really serving in this unique role where you are one of seven managing the superintendent and making policy decisions.
You mentioned, Carrie, how intense-- what an intense volunteer position this is. And I believe most elected school boards are volunteer positions, not paid. Is that a significant barrier for some of these people that you're talking about? People that have school-age kids, for example, people who, you know, who might be more representative of the community, which may mean lower socioeconomic, you know, ladder, rung on the ladder, those kinds of things? How can they even realistically do the school board job?
Yeah, we believe it absolutely is. The survey played that out. People of color were twice as likely to say that pay or other professional obligations were the reason that they were resigning compared to white board members. And yeah, we just need to be realistic that if you are, you know, expecting anyone, even if they're not lower income, to volunteer that amount of time in such an important role and not compensate them, what that says about society's belief around the importance of that role.
What can communities do, people with school-age children and those of us without? What would you like to see us doing to help elected school boards be more successful at the things that you've just described? Carrie, do you want to start?
The number one thing, although it sounds cliche, is to vote. School board elections still have very low turnout, so it's critical to make your voice heard. And that means getting to know the candidates that are running and getting to know whether they are anti-racist and focused on equity, donating to candidates of color or donating to PACs or organizations that are helping to recruit and elect candidates of color and diverse candidates. We encourage community members to, you know, go to a school board meeting and ask your school board what governance model they use. Ask if they are passing equitable policies. Bring them sample equity policies. We have many on our website. You know, writing emails and calling your state reps and telling them that school board members should be paid or that training should be required. You know, if your school board is trying to raise pay, you know, support it. Don't make it about, oh, they're trying to pay themselves. So there's a lot that community members can do. First, by becoming educated, we encourage you to read our latest report called Empty Seeds at Powerful Tables, which really lays out both the problems and solutions that we've talked about today. And then use your voice. Show up at school board meetings, vote, donate. It really does matter.
Ethan, go ahead. I'll give you the last word here.
Yeah, I just keep thinking about the point I made earlier about not wanting to be the exception but the rule. And we do have a lot of students who are like me, but they don't have the access, you know, they don't have the experiences, they're not in the environments that can create better outcomes for them. And so we want to make sure, again, that you get the right people in order to change that truth for young people of color because they exist in our system. They're just not seen, they're not elevated, they're not supported. And then I will end with saying, hug a school board member, please. Hug a school board. We need some hugs, some love, some support, a little bit of prayer, and tell a school board member how much they matter and that they're really, you know, creating different outcomes for students in ways that will improve your community over time.
Ethan Ashley is a member of the Orleans Parish School Board in New Orleans, and Carrie Douglas is on the school board in Bend, Oregon. Together, they are co-founders and CEOs of School Board Partners, which you can find online at schoolboardpartners.org. Okay, so if you could create a school board that was perfectly representative of the families in the district in terms of life stage, race, economic status, would that school board be laser-focused on improving student outcomes? Not necessarily.
Our system is designed to represent the interests of adults much more than the interests of children, especially when those two conflict.
Is that why student achievement is flagging in America? I'm Julie Rose. This is Top of Mind. At the end of the day, a school board's success is measured by how well all the kids in that district are learning. We've already talked about the persistent gaps that mean students of color are, on average, several grade levels behind their peers. What the latest report card from the U.S. Department of Education shows is that overall achievement in reading and math across the nation is worse than we've seen in decades.
Let me just give you kind of some broader historical context.
Vladimir Kogan is a professor of political science at Ohio State.
And I'm actually working on a book on kind of all these issues, and the title is No Adult Left Behind.
That's a pretty cheeky title. That will make sense in a minute.
So in 1983, there was a commission that was appointed to look at public education, and they put out a report called Nation at Risk. And in some ways, you know, they had very dire things to say about the state of American education. I'll just read you a few quotes. They said, quote, "Our nation is at risk. Our once unchallenged preeminence in commerce, industry, science, technological innovation is being overtaken by competitors throughout the world." And then they go on to say, "If an unfriendly foreign power had attempted to impose on America the mediocre educational performance that exists today, we might as well have viewed it as an act of war." So they wrote that in 1983. And then for the next 30 years, partly in response to this report, we have had a gradual but steady progress, improving achievement overall, and I think, most importantly, closing achievement gaps between higher and lower achieving students, between white and non-white students, higher income and lower income. We had that going for about 30 years until 2012. And after 2012, it started reversing, and we were going down. And then the pandemic hit, and that decrease accelerated, so that today we're basically right where we were in 1983 when that dire report came out. So if things were really bad in 1983, then certainly we should be concerned today because we're almost back to where we started then.
What happened in 2012?
I think the leading theory for that is really the end of an era of accountability. So starting in 1990, we've had this bipartisan consensus where we had major parties really focused on educational improvement, where they agreed on the mechanisms, which was annual testing, which was high standards. And that really got codified in federal law with No Child Left Behind.
No Child Left Behind passed Congress with big bipartisan support in 2001, but became extremely unpopular over time. Despite its flaws and the enormous controversy around it, Kogan says that No Child Left Behind was effective at keeping school boards focused on student outcomes because it publicly exposed test scores and achievement gaps.
And the third part was not just naming and shaming, but if you're not achieving the academic growth that your students need, there are going to be consequences. And some of it potentially was pretty severe, you know, in terms of, you know, replacing half your teachers and maybe even shutting down the school and reopening as a charter school. Now, those more severe forms of accountability, ultimately, I think, very few districts went through that because they found ways around it. But simply having that threat there, I think, was in many ways important for, again, focusing the adult attention and getting adults to prioritize some of the student outcomes. And 2012, No Child Left Behind pretty much went away.
There was so much backlash that the Obama administration rolled back many of the penalties for schools. And then in 2015, Congress replaced No Child Left Behind with the Every Student Succeeds Act.
So we still have data collection. We still have some public reporting of that data, but it really takes away all the teeth. So all those painful accountability provisions are, for the most part, gone under Every Student Succeeds Act.
And so what does that mean, then, for local school boards?
Well, I mean, I think it means that some of the pressures, some of the threats that's hanging over their head to address some of the persistently underperforming schools, to close some of the achievement gaps, really, for the most part, go away.
Kogan says that pressure to keep school boards focused on student outcomes, like improving test scores and closing achievement gaps, either comes from above with state and federal authorities or below from voters. So without No Child Left Behind bearing down from above, the pressure has to come from voters. But, says Kogan--
It's pretty clear that most of the times, school boards are not being held accountable for student learning. So what I mean by that is it's not the case that incumbents are voted out of office at higher rates when student performance is lower, right? Except some rare, pretty rare unusual circumstances. So you can have a really democratic system that's really responsive to voters, but also, at the same time, a system that does a really poor job serving kids because often the interests of those voters and the kids are not aligned. And one thing that we should know, people should know, is in most places, although this is starting to change, school board elections are off-cycle. That means they're not in November of even years, when the president is on the ballot, when congressional elections are on the ballot. And one consequence of that is that turnout in school board elections is very, very low. So, you know, it's not uncommon to see turnout of 15% of registered voters versus, you know, 60 or 70 when the president's on the ballot.
15?
15, yeah.
You said 15, 1-5%.
And one consequence of that is that those 15% look very different than the other 85% who are not voting. And one dimension where they look different is their age. So it turns out that when you have off-cycle elections, not only is turnout really low, but it's, for the most part, it's old people without kids who are voting. And of course, old people without kids, although they certainly have a stake and certainly they care and they, you know, might have grandkids, but, you know, their skin in the game is fundamentally different. And so the kinds of considerations that they bring to the ballot box are often very different than the kinds of considerations that parents themselves might bring. So in general, it doesn't seem like voters care all that much about student academic outcomes. And so the question is, well, what do they care about? And so some of that could be property taxes. You know, we know senior citizens maybe are particularly sensitive to tax increases, so they're mostly focused on keeping costs low. Or maybe they're, you know, they care about some of these adult culture war issues that are in the news and kind of motivate them and get them excited, but really not because of the impact on kids, but more because of the expressive or political valence that those issues often bring with them.
Why do you categorize something, like what makes those issues, do you think, different from, like, student outcome issues?
What makes culture war issues, I think, particularly difficult is they just suck up all the energy, they suck up all the adult attention, and they suck up all the adult time. And so every minute that you spend arguing about which books are in the library, every minute that you spend arguing about who can use which bathrooms, is really time that you could be spending on improving reading instruction. It's time you could be spending on improving the curriculum. And so because resources and time and staff are ultimately the most scarce resources in the system, it is a zero-sum game. And empirically, again, so I've done some work on this, that there is some evidence that focusing on these kinds of controversies ultimately comes at the expense of student learning. Student achievement suffers.
I'd love to hear an example of that because I could imagine that there are maybe some parents or grandparents or community members who feel like books that are available in schools or which bathroom gets used are going to affect a child's ability to learn. It affects the environment that the learning is taking place. So it is related to student learning, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So help me understand why it wouldn't be.
About 10 years ago, in California, there is a rural district called Coachella Valley Unified School District. And at the time, they had a school mascot that was known as the Angry Arab. In this area, the date palm is the main agricultural crop. So in 1930s, the community thought, you know, we should honor the Arab influence on our agriculture by naming our school after this region of the world. So for like 80 years, nobody really said much about it. And in 2013, the school district got a letter from the American Arab Inter-Discrimination Committee saying, "We're really outraged by your mascot." And, you know, it was a pretty offensive mascot. It had like a hooked nose, so you could see why people might be offended. And this got a lot of attention. So it was on international news, it was in Al Jazeera. And the superintendent spent about eight months trying to negotiate between the folks who were really offended by this mascot and the alumni who really cared about retaining a mascot. During the same time period, the district was trying to implement a just new, pretty innovative at the time, iPad program of giving every student iPad. And it did not go that well. So, you know, the teachers thought the program was not well-implemented, perhaps because the district leadership spent a lot of time doing other things like negotiating our mascots. And so ultimately, the superintendent was fired, the superintendent's top aides were fired, there was a lot of chaos in the district that followed this. So that's one example.
Now, you, if I could just be clear then, so are you saying it was wrong to challenge the Angry Arab mascot?
My point is, you know, there's opportunity costs, and you have to decide, you know, is it more important to have a mascot that's not offensive, even if that potentially, again, takes away from the other operations of the district? Again, because, again, ultimately, time is the most precious resource, and I think the challenges, a lot of these debates distract from that core learning function.
So would we be better off not electing school boards, somehow appointing them in some other way so that they could be held accountable somehow?
Well, I think it's easy to talk about all the ways in which local elections don't work well, but when we talk about what is better, it's not obvious that we have a better alternative. So most of the things we've tried really haven't worked much better. So, you know, we've tried appointing school boards, not obvious that's much better. We've had states take over school districts, doesn't seem like that, on average, is much better. We've had mayoral control, where we have the mayor step in and run the schools. Again, I haven't seen much convincing evidence that, on the whole, that that's much better. So it's not obvious how to address this issue. I think at the end of the day, the interests of policymakers who make education are often not aligned with the interests of students.
Which is why the book that he's writing is titled No Adult Left Behind.
And it's a play on No Child Left Behind, which is, you know, the federal law that we discussed. And, you know, my argument is that the governance system we have, again, really prioritizes interests of adults. And as a result, you know, we have a lot of time and attention, resources spent on adult battles, whether it's over partisanship, whether it's over race, whether it's over cultural issues, or whether it's over jobs. It's something we did discuss a lot, but employment interests and people who view local schools as primarily providing employment for adults, those are all things that drive a lot of decision-making in education. And so the point of the book is to kind of illustrate all these things and make the case that they all do ultimately, at the end, come at the expense of the core function of schools, which is serving students.
So let's talk about Professor Kogan, some of the things you think we could do to try to align the incentives between school boards and student outcomes. But where should we start?
I would say there's three things that would be at the top of my list. And I will start out by saying, I think they're not going to be cure-all's. I think these are going to be pretty modest changes on the margin, but probably better than not doing anything. So one is election timing, right? I told you that one of the reasons why school board elections have such low turnout is because they are happening when nothing else is on the ballot. And so one easy reform is just move school board elections so that they're in November of even years. And you could triple turnout, triple turnout. We also know it increases the share of voters who have kids, which, again, when we're thinking about ensuring that adult interests and student interests are aligned, that's probably a good thing. And also, we have some evidence, particularly from California, that when elections are held on cycle in November of even years, we see more accountability. So that voters do hold school board members more accountable for student academic outcomes.
Fewer incumbents get reelected.
Exactly.
There's more turnover on the board.
Exactly. And I want to say, you know, the goal is not more turnover. The goal is the threat of turnover, getting incumbents to change their behavior in the first place, right? That's the goal that we're after. And it's ensuring that the threat of elections and the incentive of elections incentivizes the right thing. The second thing we can do is really on information. You know, we collect data on student outcomes, and in many states, we actually have ratings for school districts. And I think there's many, many ways we can improve those ratings. I think there's a lot of issues with them. But making those ratings more salient to voters, I think, could help, right? You know, in the way that we print D and R and extra name on the ballot, we could imagine printing the A through F or 1 to 5-star rating for the school district right on the ballot. Really subtle cue, but potentially make that a more important consideration than some of the other things that maybe voters might otherwise be thinking about when they're voting for these local school districts. The last thing I would talk about is thinking about school choice, right? If the goal is to give more voice to adults with the most skin in the game, and that's for the most part, parents, there's other ways of doing it directly.
And let me just make sure I'm clear here. So you're defining school choice as what?
There's a variety of different ways you can think about it. You know, one is allow them to attend any school in that district. I think the challenge is often the most desirable schools don't have spots, so giving parents that option really doesn't do much because they actually still can't send their kids to the schools that they want. Another is to go beyond the district and say, any district that has open seats has to take kids from anywhere, including from outside their district. So public school choice. We can go beyond that and say, you know, we can have charter schools, so which are publicly funded but operate independently, you know, they're not accountable to the elected school board. Or we can have private schools, right, where parents get vouchers to send their kids there. And I think the evidence for the actual users of these options, I think, is pretty mixed. But I think what gets lost in this debate often is that there is a broader systematic effect. And one thing that we know, and the evidence, actually, I think, is pretty overwhelming that simply having choices available to parents, even though most parents will not use those choices, changes what districts do. That threat, that competition that they face, seems to change how they operate in a way that improves their student outcomes. And so for me, that's the most exciting part of it, right? Because it seems to constrain some of these political dysfunctions that ultimately, in the absence of competition, seem to take over and really have a negative impact. It seems to restrain those-- It seems to restrain those somewhat because they know, hey, if we're doing a really terrible job, we might lose these kids because the parents will pull them out and send them someplace else.
Okay, so the pressure only would really work on the school board if you knew that you could lose your students to another district?
Exactly, exactly. Another district or to a charter school or to a private school with a voucher? Yes, I mean, all of those produce the same threat, the same competitive pressures. They change what districts are thinking about. And they say, hey, how can we make sure that our parents are happy so that they don't use those options? And it seems like empirically, the things that districts do when they ask that question are the kinds of things that improve student outcomes.
If you were to walk into a room of community members, a mixed group of parents and people who don't have kids, and you had to make a pitch for why having a representative, responsive school board is really important, like what would you say? What's at stake here?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think every policy that we care about, at the end of the day, education is a policy lever that affects all of them. Whether it's health, whether it's economic self-sufficiency of individuals, whether it's our community health, our community economy, our community safety, it all hinges on having high-quality schools that prepare students to be self-sufficient, productive and happy adults and also inform voters, right? If you care about misinformation, where do students learn how to be critical thinkers? It's going to be in schools, right? So almost every policy area that gets people really concerned, you know, education is going to be at the heart of it.
Vladimir Kogan is a professor of political science at the Ohio State University. Studies governance and education. Professor Kogan, thank you so much for taking time today.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Top of Mind is a BYU Radio production. And we are here to help you engage with tough topics you might otherwise want to shy away from because they're too complicated or divisive. So I'd love to hear about the conversations you're having about school boards and public schools. If you're not having these conversations, maybe sharing this episode could start some. And what other topics would you like us to tackle? You can reach us on social media. We are at @topofmindpod or send an email to us directly. We're topofmind@byu.edu. Today's episode of the podcast was produced by James Hoops, Abigail Tully and me, with help from Samuel Benson. And our sound designers are Brandon Lewis and Spencer Hewitt. And one more quick thing, would you please leave a review of Top of Mind wherever you're listening to this podcast? That helps convince the algorithm in the app to recommend our podcast to more people so they can find us. I'm Julie Rose, and we'll talk soon.